Call this June 17 work session to order. Have our roll call.
District one?
Present.
District two?
Present.
District three?
Present.
District four?
Present.
Chair.
I have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Bennett.
Lord God, Father, we come to you again this Monday evening and we are thankful for the blessing that you have bestowed upon us individually and as a community, as a nation. We pray that you'll always continue to be with us and walk with us and guide us and direct us every day. We pray for our leaders both locally and nationally that they will look to you for guidance and wisdom that they need to make decisions about governing the people that they serve. I pray you'll continue to watch over us, help us and save us. Be with those that need particular care tonight because of the storms and the devastation throughout the nation. Be with them and guide them and comfort them also. Christ's name we do pray.
Amen. [Inaudible].
Next item is approval of the agenda. We'd like to take item number two off at this time. Are there any other changes to the agenda before we proceed? Have that one changed? Do you have motion to approve the agenda with those? Does that change? Motion in second. All those in favor say aye. As opposed, say no. Got no one to sign up to speak this evening, so we'll move right on to our agenda items. The first item is regarding the revenue commission office litigation and solvency. Now, this was something that was on our meeting last week and we tried to get some more information on it and you have a copy of that in your packets. This is a claim to me. These are all state funds. None of this has to do with actual county dollars. The first set there, the state taxes, are businesses most likely that have gone out of businesses or taxes that weren't collected off of those businesses that had gone out of business within this tax year. Your errors and assessments have, as Derek explained to me, that could be several different issues, whether it be a home state exemption being calculated incorrectly or the number of acres not calculated correctly. There are a number of different errors that could have occurred on that, but that's the difference in those items up there. And then the third item, the tax and litigation, is bankruptcies, any types of business or entities that filed bankruptcy. That is where those funds are calculated from. Again, this is all state taxes, has nothing to do with our county dollars. I want to make sure that you understood that. So, are there any other questions or comments on this? I'd like to put it on next meeting's agenda so that we can move forward. It's kind of a formality for the commission. It's law that the commission approved this, even though it doesn't really involve our tax dollars. Any questions or comments? Okay. So, if there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda next Monday night. Okay? Next item is resolution regarding the CDVG water project in the Hollywood Fackler area. You have in your packets, and I don't know if you've had time to read this quarter or not, this is something I've done every time a CDVG grant is applied for. The commission has to approve this. And as I understand it, this includes part of the category of 33 area that does not have water, as noted in the Hollywood Fackler area. And we'll need to approve this for them to proceed with this and need to do that at the next meeting if possible. So, any questions or comments on this particular item right now?
As I understand this, once you apply for this, no one else can apply for it, correct?
Correct. It's, I believe, a two-year time period. We'll have an application in this year, the project will be done next year, and until it's closed out here, we can't do another CDVG project.
Is there any more projects looming for CDVG grant?
No, there's one other water project that's being worked on, but it would not go with the CDVG due to the income ratio. So, as far as I know, with the Water Department of Snore County, this is the only one, or the last one really, last big one that they were looking for. There may be some small ones coming up in the future.
I think I've heard some of the residents that we're doing by December.
The project would be done? Okay, so maybe that plan will get done. I know they moved the date back too, though. Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection on this, we'll place this on the agenda next Monday night. If you have any questions before then, let us know and we'll try to get Mr. Hill of Jackson County Water and Jordan to answer. The final item is regarding presentation from Amoresco. I believe everybody's had time to kind of look at the presentation over, but we'll go ahead and if you'd like to come over and make that brief presentation.
I'm Bill Mayer. I'm the accounting executive for Amoresco here in Alabama. This is Mike Walz. He's our project development engineer. Appreciate you guys letting us show you this. We're going to run through it quick. If there are any questions, just stop us. You all know we're talking about an energy saving performance contracting project in Jackson County. We came for you a couple of months ago and you gave us permission to do a no-cost feasibility study and we just want to come back and report some of our findings. This is the rundown of this presentation. We're going to talk about just quickly what is performance contracting. We discussed that before, but just to make sure that we all get on the same page, just want to hit the highlights again. We'll talk about what Amoresco can do for the county and what we found doing the opportunity assessment, what Mike found, and then what the next steps forward in this process are. Just to reiterate, we discussed this before, but energy saving performance contracting is based in state law. There are some other folks, vendors run around and will use the term performance contracting, but we just want to make sure you guys understand when Amoresco said performance contracting, that we use the definition that's spelled out and there's the state law. It's Guaranteed Energy Cost Savings Act. There's the section number from the Code of Alabama if you want to look it up. And essentially what it says is that if you choose to work with a qualified energy service company such as Amoresco, that we're able to work with you all to lower your energy and operating costs and we guarantee that the price of the project is covered on an annual basis by the savings generated from the project. And then second, we'll talk about what a project might look like. Just a little bit simpler terms using the old pie chart. Before we do a project, this is where you are now. You've got a budget that includes energy cost and that energy also should include water, so probably better titled utility cost. And you've got maintenance cost. And every year, if you don't do a project, that pie's going to get a little bigger because, you know, utility costs, energy and water, it's constantly going up. Maintenance, the older the equipment, the older the buildings, the more maintenance required. If you choose to use performance contracting on the right side of the screen, the post-project pie chart shows that we're going to reduce, the way we guarantee the savings, and this chart is a generic chart, this is not to scale for the county, we're going to reduce energy costs, we're going to reduce maintenance costs, and that third piece of the pie, those are the guaranteed savings that will pay for the project. And again, the guarantee is measured and verified on an annual basis. So, it's, you don't wait to the end of the contract to realize all of the savings. It's guaranteed on an annual basis so that you all are not required to add any additional budget dollars or raise taxes in your budget. It's a budget neutral project. Here's just a few bullet points that talk about the difference in using the conventional procurement method versus using performance contracting. State of Alabama put performance contracting in place to encourage public sector entities such as municipalities, K-12 schools, universities, et cetera, to become more energy efficient, also help you lower your operating costs, and at the same time upgrade your facilities. While there's some complications in doing construction projects that hold back municipalities and other public sector entities, that's what this law has put in place to help alleviate some of those problems, to encourage folks like you to move forward with these types of projects. These are some bullet points that spell out the difference. If you use conventional procurement method and you decide that you're going to put in, you know, high-efficiency lighting, high-efficiency HVAC, an energy management system, that's three separate projects, meaning you would have to have it designed three times, develop three scopes, go out for bids three times, negotiate three times. Using PC, it's one, if you use a qualified energy service company such as Amoresco, the state will allow you to do a bundled solution with just one contract with us. All of the other contracts with the vendors and suppliers, they would deal with us. You all would just have one contract. That's bullet number two. I kind of ran over it. Instead of having to manage multiple contracts, you would handle one single contract and that would be with Amoresco. Conventional procurement, there are no guaranteed savings. While you may have vendors come in and run numbers for you as part of, you know, the process, they may show you the numbers, but they're not guaranteed. With performance contracting, again, based in state law, we guarantee the savings. So, if we guarantee that we're going to save you X dollars a year to pay for the project and we save you less than X, we have to make up that difference. We write a check for less than X and then we come dig into that, find out where we went wrong and make corrections. So, it's absolutely guaranteed. Number three, that was guaranteed. Number four, important, with conventional construction projects, you run into change orders. So, that can blow up a project or that can bring a project to a standstill when you get change orders that may be outside of your budget, the change orders. Performance contracting, the state does not allow, the vendor being an energy service company, we're not allowed to bring change orders to you guys. So, you get a lot more due diligence up front from us. If we don't do a good job in designing the project and we find that there were some costs that we didn't account for, that's on us, it's not on you. Just one quick note, no change orders are allowed from us to you. On the other hand, if we get into a new project and you would like to add to the project and you want to initiate a change order, that is allowed. It's just we're not allowed to bring change orders to you. Number five is another important project. A lot of people say, well, you know, why don't we just do this ourselves? If we identify four or five different energy cost-saving measures, why don't we just do them ourselves? When you do incremental projects, you're losing the savings. We're doing these projects simultaneously, so we're capturing all the savings simultaneously instead of doing projects in a series where you're not able to capture all of the savings all at once. If I'm talking too fast, just slow me down. Here's the opportunity assessment. That's another term for feasibility study. We're going to talk here quickly about what we looked at here in the county, what your spend is, what potential improvements could be made through one of these projects. And then we'll talk about the numbers, what savings and program potential would be. Mike is a project development engineer. He's the guy that had his hands on and was out, so I'm going to let him talk about the opportunity assessment.
Well, a few weeks ago, I walked through each of these buildings to feel for the type of energy systems in the buildings. I think it's terribly unusual about the buildings. As we move forward, my understanding is that Kamiak's building is still being de-ignitioned and so we'll refer to the project that we try to develop. We might include that. Based on land utilities, based on your last two years, September of 11 to August 12, that's the point of utilities of those particular buildings. The total, interesting enough, is very similar to what you spent four years ago. However, the natural gas costs have gone down significantly, while electricity has gone up. Potential areas that we'll look into more detail if we move on with the detailed energy audit, with the lighting retrofits, there have been some lighting projects done, second-generation lighting opportunities that we will look at, and maybe some exterior lighting that we can evaluate and see if there's some good paybacks there too. Lighting controls are often used in office buildings, some of them where tenants come and go and leave their lights on. It's a high intensity sensor that turns them off. We'll look at water conservation. The pictures that we got there, I really wish I was able to use the picture that I just saw down the hall, some extremely old plumbing fixtures. But we can look at upgrading it, use a significant amount, less water than conventional ones. We'll look at energy management systems and controls. This building in particular has some significant needs in the way of controls. They're not very user-friendly either, so we can help with that issue. Some of them are very simple, like program thermostat, like what I would say at home. Other types of improvements in HVAC that we'll definitely investigate and hopefully can improve operating conditions and reduce energy. Here's courthouse with cooling towers, the air hammer units are very old and in bad shape when you look at that carefully. Might do some free cooling here at courthouse. At the jail, I hope to investigate the equipment there, based on the age of the jail, is starting to get near its end of its use of life and is going to cause some additional maintenance costs for the county in the next few years of replacing these units or repairing them. The problem with repairing them is that the units are all R22. Some of them are made with that refrigerant which has been taken off the acceptable list that's no longer in production. It has escalated from about $150 per 30 pound can five years ago to over 600 now and it's rapidly increasing. All R22 that's out there has to be recycled and reused. The equipment is no longer in production. The new equipment is much higher efficiency and uses a number of refrigerant containers and as those, I would assume we can be replacing those units at the jail when they have to with this newer equipment, but we can possibly do that as part of this project all at once on a monthly basis. Other miscellaneous type energy conservation measures we'll look at are floodlot controls that might contribute, should be a fair amount of computers in these buildings that you look at putting some occupancy-based sensors that will shut these equipment down and put it into a sweep mode in a better fashion than what we're doing here now. Program potential, this first column here is what I see very easily done, it's a savings of about 13%, which would be about nearly $33,000 dollars a year in savings. The other columns are what would be goals that we might can reach here once we get into it in detail, in the detailed energy audit. I'll be able to narrow it down now. Right now, this is, the 13% what I see is at minimum, we could probably do. It would generate a project of about not quite $500,000, self-funded. You can see if we can save 20%, it would generate a project of nearly $800,000, which you get that much improvement and an energy saver of over $50,000 a year. That gives you a feel for the range of what I see based on utility bills and all of the...
And again, just to emphasize, these numbers at the bottom, 488 over 802, that's the value of improvements that would be made to county facilities and it would be self-funding because we'd be able to capture those savings. So, if all, you know, all went well, the best-case scenario, we'd do $800,000 in county improvements without the need for any additional budget dollars.
This is just another way of looking at the same figures, it's based on the 488,000. Kind of minimal, everything we can do. Yeah. This is a cash flow. When we prepare, we move on to a detailed energy audit and we come to you with an energy service agreement, there will be a chart like this that will have the size of the actual project. I put this together just based on the question of 488. After we develop it, we will have one of these that is part of the contract so that you know what your savings are going to be, what other expenses, the debt services, what envy costs are, how much the annual savings are. And this last column out there is net annual cash flow. We point that out here that the state law requires that that number be zero or positive. In other words, the pie chart that he showed at the beginning, the pie stays the same size at all times. It's neutral. Or if, if we can, there'll be some positive cash flow, so it'll be this other little piece that just goes to the county.
There's just a few other observations that Mike made as we looked around. There's some needs here in the courthouse that we'll have to really dig into to make sure we can recover savings. But there's some air handlers in the basement that are very old that need replacing. Everybody in this building agrees that the cooling and heating is uneven, so that's something we certainly want to look at. Mike mentioned R22. R22s are refrigerant, but it's in the air conditioning units. That cost is going to escalate. R22 will eventually, there will be a day when you cannot get it, so you will be forced to replace equipment. Even while it's available, just about every day it's out there, it's a little more expensive. So, it's a good idea to get rid of it, get rid of the units that require R22 now.
It's presently at about $30 a pound, a typical home air conditioner, a small four or five ton unit that you might see somewhere, has about eight to 10 pounds in it. So, if you get a leak, that's money just to go away.
I'm going to skip to the bottom of the point real quick. There are maintenance agreements, if there are any with the county maintaining equipment here, like the HVAC, of course, new equipment requires less maintenance, so you pay less to maintain it. And that's something like a maintenance agreement like on recurring maintenance. So, a piece of new equipment, you know, you'd be able to negotiate the price of regular maintenance downward certainly. And then the third bullet, which would probably have been the last one, state law does allow the county to make capital contributions to the project if the county chooses to and wants to make the project even larger. And it's a way to leverage your money. If you have a budget line item now for capital improvements, HVAC improvements, whatever, you know, you may call it, a facilities line item, it's a good way to leverage the present value of money by stretching it out over a 15-year project. So, that is possible. We didn't look at that here. We were just looking at the high-level view. So, that'd be something that would be negotiated if we move further in the process. And it would be something that, you know, you all would certainly have to agree to before we did it. Here's the, I didn't even know I had the effect of the check mark going in and out. Here's the process, performance contracting process. The check mark indicates, tonight we're talking to you about the no-cost feasibility study. Again, we appreciate you all letting us do the study and come back and talk to you. Our goal from this meeting, Mike and I, our goal is to have you guys, if you're, you know, if you're, if you see the value in performance contracting, is to publish an RFP and that should probably be an RFQ, a request for qualifications, is what it should be. And I've got a copy of one over here that, you know, you'd have to fill in the blanks that you guys are more than welcome to use. And what that, you have to, when you go out for an RFP for one of these projects, again, you get the benefits of using performance contracting in lieu of the standard, you know, design, bid, build process. You just have to indicate that you are looking for a qualified energy service company to perform an energy service performance contract for, you know, Jackson County. We can provide you with verbiage that's regularly used on these types of projects. After that, you receive the proposals just like you would with any other project. You evaluate the proposals and then the commission would select an ESCO, ESCO being energy service company partner. And of course, we would hope you would select us. And then beyond that, from steps one through four, there's absolutely no financial obligation for the county. We did the feasibility study at no cost. If we leave tonight, you guys don't invite us back here, you're never going to get a bill from us. Publishing the RFP, that could cost you nothing. Taking in and evaluating proposals doesn't cost you anything. When you get to step five, the investment grade audit slash project scope development, we ask for a letter of intent at this step. And what the letter of intent says is that if you move forward, and that's when the investment grade audits, when we're going to come in and put hands on equipment, we're going to get down, it's not just walking by it, we're going to touch it, we're going to count lights, et cetera. We're going to bring in subcontractors and get equipment pricing. We're starting to develop the scope here. And if you decide to move forward with a project, the cost of that project development will become a part of the cost of the project, which again, will be recovered. All costs are recovered for the savings. So, you know, we would recover that in the project. That's part of that guaranteed pie. If for some reason you decided not to move forward, we would invoice you for professional services. The value of that professional service there for number five will be agreed upon upfront. It wouldn't be us getting our feelings hurt and sending you a $10 million invoice that you wouldn't pay anyway. But we agree with the number upfront and it's very similar to a professional service agreement if you hired an engineering firm to come in to evaluate your building systems or an architecture firm to come in to evaluate your buildings. But the value of that agreement is agreed upon upfront. So, everybody would know moving forward, if we decide to stop, we owe Amoresco X dollars. I will tell you that it's a very minimal number. It's a break-even number. Amoresco, we are not in business to do investment grade audits. We're in business to do the bundled construction projects. That's how we make money. So, the investment grade audit number is a break-even number for us. That is not at all what we get, you know, how we make our money. Beyond that, we bring you, we develop scope of work, we would come to an energy service agreement. The ESA, that is the contract piece of performance contracting. That is the contract. And it spells out in great detail what the scope of work would be and it spells out in great detail what the financial agreement would be and what to expect. So, you sign that, beyond that, project implementation, that is, that's us. We take on the role of the general contractor beyond that. So, we do everything from consultant to engineering to project manager all the way through the process. So, I said, our goal, step two, would be to get you all to agree to, you know, publish, post an RFP is the next step. This slide is just a few bullet points that, kind of a resume. Amoresco, we are an accredited energy service provider and it's labeled down at the bottom the ESCO, that's National Association of Energy Service Companies, and we hold their highest accreditation. That's the highest level of accreditation they offer and we hold that. We've done more than $5 billion in these projects since the year 2000, so you all are definitely not going to be a penny pig. We have 63 offices in 34 states. My office is in Helena, Alabama, which is a suburb of Birmingham. Performance contracting is our only business. It's our core business. It's our only business. We don't manufacture anything and we don't run service trucks. So, this is what we do. We don't do anything else. We're an independent company, which means we offer a lot of flexibility that some of the other vendors in this space don't offer. Right there's our website. You've got a lot of information there. And finally, we do appreciate your time, the several trips we've made up here. We appreciate all your time and your interest. If you need us, have to get in touch with me. Flipped through it and talked about it a couple of times. Any questions? Comments?
At what point do we have an idea of, a more firm idea of what the project will cost for the savings involved with it? Will that not be until we have...
That would be right here, step five. That's where Mike comes back. The number he threw out, that 13% to 20%, that's a fairly good estimate just based on experience, you know, doing many, many of these. So, that's the ballpark you're looking at. It's not going to be, you know, half of that or 10 times that. That's a good ballpark to, you know, wrap your mind around. Right here is where the scope is developed. This is where you're developing, but step five, you're actually developing this agreement. Step six is signing the agreement.
How long does that process take? Week, two weeks, months? We've been getting those out about 60 days.
Yeah. 60 days.
I'll come back and I'll be going through our great, I'll be getting your, I'll be plating systems and all that in detail.
And as we've discussed with you all before, this piece here, we like to co-develop the projects because you all know what your wish list is, you know where your problems are that you need addressing. We have the capability of doing 100%. You know, that's not how we further it up because we don't know your building, we don't know your facilities the way you do. But in this step, we're going to work with you guys, but usually 60 days. But in this step, we're going to work with you guys, but usually 60 days is a reasonable expectation for this turnaround. And then when we get to this point where you evaluate the service agreement, you know, that's usually up to a 30-day process. And the reason that's usually 30 days is because you all work in a 30-day cycle with your meetings and, you know, your approval processes.
In theory, I can do it faster than that, but like I was explaining earlier, we've got to get contractors, subcontractors involved in some of that. Once I've developed what I think we need to do in scope, I walk them through, I come back again and I walk them through it and get pricing from the contractor that says they can do it for that. So there's extra steps there to get, you know, hard numbers.
We talked briefly earlier about, you know, our project savings is based on the next nine years. Is the funding of the proposal got to be done at one time or is this something negotiable to where we can make two payments, three payments?
Well, it's kind of a lease purchase arrangement where the finance company puts the money in escrow for us to, as we build things, for us to bill to them so we can pay our contractors. And then when we do, the project completes, substantial completion, everybody signs off on it, then we get our portion of it. We kind of like the last one. And then...
So the funding stays with us and you're just doing draws?
We're drawing down just like a general contractor would on...
What type of length or time to do a upgrade save loan number 488? What kind of time?
Construction, probably no more than six months because it's just, I mean, it's not that large a project. Just depends on what kind of, what subs we're using, obviously the scope and the time of year or two when we get it done, get started always affects it. Kind of hard to change that award in January, so.
But to clarify your answer, maybe I just understood your question, the payment, you won't be paying us. This is like if you built a house or bought a car, you know. We're going to arrange and we don't do financing. We can bring financial institutes to the table that understand this business model, that have done business with us before. We go out for bids to get the best interest rates and terms for you all. You can handle it and we'll do it for you, you know, show you all the numbers. We get paid, like Mike said, we get a draw, you know, like a construction project. But then when we get to the end, whatever the balance is, the finance company, you know, they're going to pay us and your terms and, you know, your payments are back to them. You're not paying us in chunks. You then go pay them whatever agreement you have, annual payments, semi-annual, quarterly, monthly, you know, whatever you...
And this, these annual debt payments are made at the end of the year after the measurement verification for previous year is verified and you're satisfied with that, then you make the debt payment. That's our goal.
Thank you.
You have a question? Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Will, you said you have a copy of the RFP. If you can get that, we'll take a look at that and then we need to determine what we want to move forward with it. So we'll look at this and possibly put this on the next meeting agenda if it looks like we want to move forward with it. Any other questions on that? All right. It concludes the items on our agenda. We'll go on to our reports. Mr. Whiteberg?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Quarter?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Gadsden?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Williams?
No.
In your fact, you do have a few copies of some minutes if you'll review those. I'd like to get all those approved next week, because we've had several meetings in the past few weeks. And that concludes everything on our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion.
Motion next second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Adjourn.